Hello, I'm Justin Katz and thank you for watching or listening to Tiverton on Track, the weekly podcast of the Tiverton Taxpayers Association. This is episode number 23 and we're at November 19th, 2020, Thanksgiving next week. I almost didn't believe it when one of my kids reminded me of that earlier today. So Track One, schools out forever? Today Rhode Island Governor Gina Raimondo announced that among other restrictions, high schools in the state are going to be limited to 25% of their capacity after Thanksgiving. So this is owing to an increase in the number of cases of COVID-19 in the general population in Rhode Island. We've been testing somewhere between 15,000 and 20,000 people a day and somewhere around 1,000, 600 to 1,000 of those are coming back positive. Maybe no symptoms, maybe symptoms, but it's enough of an increase that the governor's worried and she's effectively forcing most high schools in Rhode Island back into a distance learning mode and all sports are pushed off until at least January. So now, I know that opinions differ wildly about these things, but you know, that only makes it more important for us to talk about them and discuss what we think about it. So during this whole ordeal, going back to March, fewer than five Tiverton residents have been hospitalized for COVID-19. This is according to the state's tracking website and there are fewer than five deaths of anybody school aged throughout the entire state that entire time. And on those, it's important to note, we don't know if they're from the virus or they're related for other causes, but the person happened to test positive for them, for the virus. And now even with this big wave of positive tests, there's still fewer than 30 people per day, per week, you know, all of Tiverton testing positive. Now that's for, for percentage, that's about, not for ratio, that's about one positive test with or without symptoms for every roughly 550 residents in town. So this is not the plague and it's not, it's not as prominent in the community as it seems and it's not as deadly as some people are making it out to be. It's not to say this isn't, this is all a big hoax, I'm not going that far. And it's not to say people shouldn't take precautions. I know I am, I know other people should be and, and wear the mask, social distance, wash your hands, that's just always good advice. But the approach we're taking, shutting things down, schools especially, it's causing huge harm. Now look in the economy, according to today's employment report for Rhode Island, there are almost 20,000 Rhode Islanders who stopped looking for work last month. That there are 36,000 fewer jobs in the state than there were a year ago. That's the economy, that's adults out in the world trying to work. Now our kids are falling well behind. We don't get as much detail and data about this from the state, but if you talk to some teachers outside of, you know, the, the public spotlight where there's a lot of scrutiny, they'll tell you a lot of their students are just way behind from all this distance learning and it's not parents fault, it's, it's just, they're not getting the, the kind of one-on-one interaction they should get and families are busy and often don't have the technology, things are going weird and everybody did the best they could in the spring to, to make things work, but kids are falling behind. I mean, there are kids that should be able to read at this point who can't. There are critical milestones being missed throughout education, K to 12. You might've seen on some local Facebook pages, soccer players at Tiverton High School are actually collecting signatures on a petition because after their years of hard work, after all the practice, they're being forfeited out of the playoffs because somebody, I think on another team tested positive. So this is causing huge ripples and will have lasting effect on, on all of our children. Yet, you know, the governor's new rule on 25% capacity, essentially distance learning in high school, that's not even as far as the statewide teachers unions wanted to go. So, and that's a good reminder that students aren't the only ones in the building and some of our dedicated wonderful teachers, our bus drivers, janitors and, and other staff members, they are older or they're for some other reason vulnerable to virus. But you know, as, as parents, we kind of have to ask, isn't there some other way to keep the education going and protect vulnerable people? Can't we find some mix of targeted protection for vulnerable people and return to the idea, you know, we're all adults and we're all families making our own decisions, we're making decisions about our own risks, you know, you drive a car, we make our own decisions about taking responsibility for our own actions. I think if we had a little bit more of that in a mix, we'd, we'd be better off. And in my opinion, the governor's treating all Rhode Island, all Rhode Islanders like children and we shouldn't accept that. So that's my two cents for this week. So Track Two is zoning out Joel Bishop. So even, even in a pandemic, local politics in Tiverton has a way of generating controversy in the smallest corners. At the center of it this time around is Joel Bishop, who is a non-voting alternate member of the Tiverton Zoning Board of Review. And the controversy started before the election. In August, it was clear that, let's call them political insiders, had him in their sights. So to set, set the stage, here's a clip of Town Council Vice President at the time Denise DiMederos raising an unprecedented objection to Joel's reappointment to the position even though there were no other applicants.
The alternate positions are annual appointments, there are, have, there have been no other applications for the zoning board, correct Nancy, other than?
No.
And both of these members are existing, are, are the existing alternates on the zoning board. Denise?
Trish, I'm just gonna say it out loud, I guess. Jennifer Hilton, I do know participates. If you look at Joel Bishop, what I understand, he's only been to two meetings.
My understanding, he's only missed two.
Are you sure he missed two or if he didn't, he only went to two?
It's my understanding, he's only missed two.
Well, I feel uncomfortable voting for this unless I know whether or not he's participated more than two meetings.
So that was back in August and they did end up appointing Joel unanimously as it happened when, after they got him on and he stated his case. So here is zoning board, the Zoning Board of Review Chairwoman Lisi Geshite. At the end of their last meeting or prior to recording an interview with Joel this week, the prior meeting to that, Geshite attacked, an unannounced attack on Joel, right into the new business section of her board's agenda, it wasn't on the agenda, but she, she brought it up. So here's just a little bit of a taste of how that started out.
Well, I have some comments for Mr. Bishop. And I have to say that you've missed more meetings than anyone else has missed. You don't pick up your packages to read, to read the matters for the board.
Is he still listening?
Huh?
Is he listening?
I have no idea if he's listening, but I'm listening and you're listening.
I'm listening.
I'm listening.
I think you have never come to me with any suggestion about how we could make the board better. You have never offered any concerns about how this board operates and you just turned around and gave us a hatchet job on the internet criticizing me and every member of this board.
Not every member.
Know what you're doing. You have no idea how this board works.
Meetings are being...
The whole question that you got, you got on this board to advance your own political career, but if you can't get along with other people and discuss things as a collaborative group, your political future is going nowhere.
Some pretty dramatic stuff right there. So to talk about it, I had Joel on the show and here's my conversation with him. All right, so welcome back to the show, Joel Bishop. Joel, I didn't expect you to have, have you back so soon after the election, but it seems like since your last appearance, there's been a bit of a, one of those local controversies that only small towns seem to be able to generate. And so I thought I'd have you on to talk about it. For the record, for the audience, I did contact Lisi Geshite from the zoning board, invite her on, she didn't respond. In fairness, it was through Facebook and sometimes people don't check those messages. So Joel, I just played for the audience a clip of Town Councilor Denise DiMederos questioning you on your reappointment as to, when you were trying to be reappointed as the second alternate to the zoning board. And so, so people understand, this isn't, this is the town administrator, this is the non-voting position on the zoning board.
I have yet to vote. I have not voted a single time yet.
Exactly. It'll probably be years till you, till you have a vote, but she was, she was questioning your reappointment. And then I also played a clip from the latest zoning board meeting as I, as I, before I play this, I've recorded this. And in that one, Chairwoman Lisi Geshite was, was there challenging you on, on something you'd written pledging to get you knocked off the board. So what's going on? Are they after you? Is the town after you or something?
They certainly seem to be. I mean, the, the first appointment was full of drama. I didn't even know Lisi, I just wanted to do my civic duty, I'm a libertarian, I'm all about property rights and you know, the best place to be is on the zoning board. I mean, I want to help people of the town to do what they want to do, it's their property. So I mean, so this is where I'm coming from. So you know, first time, there's a, there's a position available, so I, I went for it. I didn't, I didn't know who else was going for it and I didn't even know that much about it honestly, about, you know, about the players in town. And so I went before the board and I submitted my application and they, they stalled and they made sure I, oh, you have to go to a meeting and that gave Lisi time to come back because she's been on there, I don't know, close to two decades. And you know, they wanted to basically run cover for her. So that's how it all started and ever since then, it's been, you know, it's been contentious. My first zoning board meeting, I sit next to George Alzabec and he actually asked me if I was going to physically assault him.
Just out of nowhere?
Yeah, 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 just first, first thing he says to me, he's like, so are you gonna hit me? And I thought it was, I thought, I thought like I misheard him. I was like, wait, what, what was that? And he's like, are you gonna, are you gonna hit me? Are you gonna physically hit me? Like, I don't, I don't think so, George. And so that's how it all started. So yeah, so you know, when I was running for Town Council, I did write a letter about my experiences on the zoning board and I'm a second alternate and it's important to me that the zoning board who does hold so much power over people's rights runs smoothly and efficiently and treats people with respect. And namely, Lisi and George do not treat people with respect. I said in my letter, you know, several of the veterans and I shouldn't have phrased it that way because there's really two people, it's, it's George and Lisi, they've been on there the longest and they think they run this town, they think they're, you know, judge, jury and executioner.
Well, before we get to that, I mean, so you were appointed by the Town Council in 2019. It's interesting to note, your, your welcome to that board was George Alzabec going, welcome to the board, are you a psychopath? I mean, we're, we're in it for unity and goodwill. But um, so that was 2019, you were appointed and then you were reappointed August 24th.
Yeah, yeah, so that was a contentious reappointment. I had missed a couple of meetings, one of them was because I was in Brazil and the other one, as they cornered me basically in the meeting because Lisi didn't go about, you know, the proper way, she should've gone to the town administrator and asked why I was missing a meeting. It turned out because I had a heart attack. I had a heart attack at the beginning of the year, I'm fine now, as you can see, if you know me at all, I've lost a bunch of weight, much healthier now. But they, they basically cornered me on the, on the Town Council meeting into saying that and I, and I shouldn't have had to. She should've gone before the town administrator, talked to him, town administrator should've talked to me and we would've worked it all out.
Well, like even before that, it's, you know, talk to you, say, you know, you've missed a couple of meetings, I know you're new, you're an alternate on the board and you've got time to learn the ropes, just so you know, it's important you show up, is anything wrong? I mean, that would kind of be the way you'd go about that sort of thing normally, right?
Normally. And it was literally one unplanned meeting. Now in my reappointment, Hilton and DiMederos tried to make, I think they said four, I missed four meetings, I said, no, I didn't miss four meetings, they said I missed two. I did miss two, one of them was planned because I was on a trip and then the other one because of my health. And recently, so after, you know, writing my letter about my experiences on the zoning board, Lisi Geshite wrote a letter to the Town Council and went before them and is trying to get me kicked off of the zoning board because she doesn't like my freedom of speech, which is exactly what she claimed during the recall, is I'm not breaking any rules to, to say what I think, I, I don't disrupt the meetings. And she actually said in her letter that I've missed three meetings and that is accurate. It was two last year and then one unfortunately I missed this year. I was running late and meeting ended up being canceled anyway because the power went out. So I don't even know if you can count that as missing the meeting, I was late for the meeting, but then the meeting was canceled.
That was...
Officially on the record, let's say it was three, not four last year, so.
I'd kind of count that as a, as a tardy, but I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of amazing. So the, the letter you wrote, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but that was after the drama with your reappointment, right? So, so after a year, there's all this, this sort of surprise drama at the Town Council meeting and just so people are aware, these, these reappointments are generally very pro-forma. There's nobody else looking for the position, right? It was just...
Nobody else running.
It's, do we, do we reappoint Joel or have nobody?
Or nobody, yeah.
That was really the question.
And they wanted nobody.
And they're bringing up attendance issues, which I've never seen, I've never seen the Town Council challenge a reappointment as a, and what really killed me about watching that is, I remember when, when I was on the council, all the times we would bring up somebody to just say, hey, you know, we want to talk to this person, it's, and Lisi Geshite was one of them, we want to hear from her, we're new to this, she's been here a long time, let's hear her experience and before we just reappoint her. And that was, oh, if you, Patricia Hilton was saying, oh, if you keep doing this to people, we'll never get volunteers. Well, what do you think could happen?
That's what they said.
Exactly, that's their attitude.
That's what they said about me writing the letter, nobody's ever gonna volunteer because Joel's writing a letter. I hope more people volunteer, that's what we need, we need to get people like, like Lisi and, and George who've been on here for literally decades, we need, we need new blood.
Well, yeah, even, even just a mix, I mean, half our boards aren't even full, right? So, so let's, let's spend some time on the letter. So the letter, to listen to Lisi Geshite and to read her letter to the Town Council, was your letter to the editor, was it like 10 paragraphs going after her personally and putting out personal details out there? What was the letter really?
I, I think it was maybe three sentences, basically saying that when you want to know how a town treats its, its townspeople, you should look at the zoning board because they have a lot of power over basically enforcing zoning, which is against, usually in my opinion, against people's property rights. And so that's where you go because it's, you know, it's pseudo judicial. And I basically said that people were not being treated with respect and that things need to change. I mean, that was really, in summary, it was maybe three or four sentences.
In a, in a letter to the editor, which is mostly about your candidacy and the good things you wanted to do in town. I think the, the zoning board, people need to understand, this is, I mean, I hear, I hear a lot from people who say, I, yeah, I built, I wanted to build a shed, I wanted to do this and the zoning, zoning board wouldn't give me any variances. It's a big source, a big source of lawsuits. I mean, one of the more famous in town in recent decades is William McLaughlin and had his, had his barn ripped down and that was because the town approved it and shouldn't have. But they, so they, the town sent a crew on actually to knock down the barn, hundreds of thousands of dollars of litigation there, millions of dollars potentially in a settlement or something if, if he ever actually succeeds, which looks doubtful. But this is not just, I mean, it's, it's not, you know, some are planning boards say where they get around and chat about things, it's, it's a serious, serious board there.
Yeah, and my understanding is that he wasn't even, he wasn't even off of his property, he's just too close and he did have permission from the town. So, I mean, yeah, to, to tear down the man's barn or garage or whatever it was after the fact, I mean, and that was under Lisi, she's been there the whole time, this is all under her. We, last week, or the week before, I guess, last zoning meeting, we talked for two hours about a gentleman who wants to put in a two-car garage and instead of being 35 feet from the border, from the property line, which his neighbor is not contesting, he was gonna be 31 feet, he needed four feet of variance. We talked for two hours about it. And you know, Lisi said, well, I've been here for 30 years, I don't have a, I don't have a garage. Okay, what's the matter? And with a garage, just give him a garage, four feet, done. I mean, that's, that's a five-minute conversation.
Yeah, well, I watched that meeting or skimmed through it, that's a long time to watch the argument about a garage, but they moved in, they saw the plan, it said, here's what you are, maybe a miscommunication somewhere, maybe a mis, mismeasurement, but some of this, some of these things just egregious. And I know the, the zoning board, I had Joe Suez on here and he said, one of the reasons he always tries to, to limit the money for the zoning department, for the building and zoning department, is just so you can't have this kind of enforcement where you're going out and looking for things to, to penalize. It's really, I mean, from that, I mean, it is a, it is an interesting question that, well, the people in the town should debate more is, what's the purpose of zoning? It does have a purpose, you don't want people just doing anything and then you buy, if you buy a house and everybody knows in your town, anything goes, so you might buy it and it collapses a year in, you want some kind of zoning and inspection, but where, where do you think for you is that line? Where's the, the freedom line?
I always lean on the side of the property owner. I mean, if you're on your property, I have a hard time saying no. If you can, if you can come up with any kind of reasonable argument, if it's not completely egregious, I mean, yes. And every time, as a second alternate, I don't get to actually vote, but I do get to, to talk, I do get to, to give my side and I said the same thing, this is a property rights issue. I remember the meeting I had to visit before I was appointed so that, you know, that the twins could run some cover and make sure Lisi could get to the next meeting. It was the, the Wally's pub owner and the fire marshal had told him he needs a second exit from the porch and that was in no way communicated back to the zoning board or, or the zoning. Regardless, he was there on his own behalf, he didn't hire a lawyer, which is a big no-no for the zoning board, oh, you don't, don't hire a lawyer. And, and it was, it was ridiculous, like it took, again, it was, it was like an hour discussion where he's like, look, I just need to make another set of stairs because they told me that I need another fire exit off of, of my, my porch, right? Because I guess he's gonna put some tables out there. And he's too close to the property line with the bank because he had gotten a variance. Again, round and round and round and Lisi, her favorite words, well, I just, I just don't understand, I just don't understand. So I, I actually stepped up, which I got in trouble for, and I pointed on the plans right there, that's what he's talking about. And she was, oh, she was flustered.
You mean, you, this was pre-COVID or something and so you could actually?
Yeah, 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 pre-COVID.
So you got up and said, right, this is what he's looking at.
This is the spot, right here.
It's almost like you need a laser pointer.
I'm looking at.
Yeah, they, I know, when I was on the council, the, the Chamber of Commerce had a day where people from Town Council members, the town administrator went around and talked to small businesses and there was, he's gone now, there was an art studio trying to get started over by Little Bear on, on Main. And he, I mean, typical complaints you hear is, I put up a handicap ramp, everything was fine, it was signed off on, then they come and say, no, it's gotta go this way, so I had to tear it all up and put it this way. How do you expect me to make, make a business work here? And we, we heard that everywhere we went. It's like every, every different zoning director, zoning board, or not zoning, zoning inspector comes in and has a different set of rules and...
We've had many and I, I like the new guy, he seems pretty nice, but I mean, it all comes back to the chair, it all comes back to Lisi in the end and she's supposed to be the one who's, you know, the final say, I mean, it's, it's, it's a vote, but she runs these meetings and she's supposed to be the leader. It's computer illiterate, I mean, ever since COVID, forget about it, the whole thing, I mean, we, we haven't barely had any meetings this year because she can't figure out how to work a computer. I think she finally got it figured out, but for the first couple of meetings, she was actually going to the Town Hall so they could help her. I mean, she just, she just needs to go.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to give people a little time to get used to the technology, it is difficult, but it is, so on that one, but I, I think it's important to note, it's not just, I mean, you, you mentioned she was around for the, the Bill McLaughlin issue 17 years ago or whenever it was, but it was not just her, there are people, Denise DiMederos on the Town Council, for example, the one who was challenging your reappointment, she was on the council for that Bill McLaughlin episode, is, it's like this, this set that needs to be a little, there needs to be some shakeup and it looks like when you get somebody on the board who's at least gonna offer a different perspective, like you, then suddenly it's controversy, yeah, it's just this person doesn't belong here, we'd rather have an empty seat.
Empty seat, because he missed, he missed literally three meetings over the course of, you know, going on two years. And one of them because of one planned, one because of a health condition and the other one was canceled.
Right. Well, that kind of, when, when you, when they did get you to talk about your health in public, that was, that kind of shut them up and you were appointed unanimously because...
Unanimously, yeah.
What are you gonna say? You can't really, I mean, at that point, it wasn't, I, yeah, I went skiing, it was, it was, there was a legitimate reason, which...
A legitimate reason.
You know, ought to be the assumption, right?
Yeah, and, and, yeah, well, it should be, not with George, George always assumes everybody's lying, everybody's trying to cheat. The, the bar, according to what my information for the charter is that I would have to miss three unexcused meetings in a row. So short of that, I don't know what her argument is. She, she used some lawyer speak in her letter to the Town Council about with cause, but there is no cause. Her cause is that she doesn't like me, she doesn't like that I tried to take her seat, which had nothing to do with her, I just wanted to be on the board, I wanted to be a voting member so I could help fellow townspeople with their zoning issues and, and give them relief. I want to just give people relief and not cause all these, these problems for the town, all these lawsuits. But yeah, it comes down to, she rules the town, she thinks she does, she thinks she's, she's the judge and I have spoken out against her and I will continue to speak out against her and George and they'll come at me and, and that's fine.
Yeah, well, we'll see, have to see how the new Town Council shakes out on these issues. Might be, there's a bit of a toss-up, there's some unknown variables in that, in that council. So what do you expect to come next from all of this?
Well, you know, after this video, I'm sure Lisi's gonna catch wind of it and I'm sure, I mean, at the last Town Council meeting, she actually started tearing into me at the end of the meeting, during the meeting.
Zoning board, you mean?
What was that?
The zoning board meeting.
Yeah, it's a zoning board meeting, yep. And that was a, an Open Meetings Act violation, so I need to file all these things, I'm just really busy, so I need to file all these things. The lawyer, the solicitor actually said, actually, this is not appropriate, it was not on the agenda, but I'll give you time to defend yourself. So I did, I defended myself. Alzabec tried to talk over me, so I had to get a little heated with him because he, he won't be talking over me, that's for sure. And yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure it's gonna continue, but I'm just gonna keep doing my civic duty, I'm gonna be there for the meetings and I'm, I'm just gonna continue to usually side with the, the applicants and just try to, just try to, to show that, you know, there are people that will stand up in this town, that actually care for the rest of the town and the people in the town and, and all of our freedom. And, and we don't need to be ruled by people who've been on the zoning board for going on 20 years that just want power, that's what it comes down to, I think.
So just to, to flesh out though, the meeting a little bit, so it's, it was at the end of the meeting of the zoning board, new business, Lisi Geshite decides new business is berating you. She goes on talking for a little bit, the town solicitor, Michael Marcello, says, this is not appropriate, we're getting into a topic here, this isn't just an announcement. And says, but I'll, because she would, and after you, Mr. Bishop, I'll give you a chance to, to defend yourself. You begin to do that and George Alzabec decides he's not going to let you and can't keep his mouth shut and jumps in and, so that's basically the way that went.
Yep, yep, so I, I got to defend myself, a couple of sentences if I recall and then, yep, and then George chimed right in and then I, I just had to, you know, shut him down, I just continued to talk, I wouldn't let him, I wouldn't let him be heard, I had the floor. Then the solicitor shut me down because, I mean, none of it was really appropriate, but he was at least doing his job in, in letting me defend myself and Alzabec was, you know, because of, of course, he's the other judge and he controls the zoning board meeting and, and he wasn't gonna let me defend myself. And I actually called him out about how he said the first time, I said it right on, because they're being recorded now, I said it right on, on the recorded thing, I said, you, you, inferred that I was going to physically assault you on my first meeting, George? And he didn't say anything to that, I actually gave him time to answer that, he didn't say anything.
So what do you think happened that they're now videotaping them?
I don't know, I don't know. And I've actually been trying to lead the charge to get these meetings video recorded because of how Lisi has been acting and how George has been acting and how they're rude to people, they just generally talk down to people. And so I was gonna start recording myself, I actually called the, the guys that do the recordings for our Town Council meetings and I was gonna pay out of my pocket to have these meetings recorded, this was all pre-COVID, now that everything's over Zoom, I don't know what the decision, when the decision was made, but they have started recording them and so I encourage everybody to go and, and watch. Her behavior has been better on the last meeting or two, but even so, I mean, even in the last meeting, you know, her dogs were barking and so she had to, oh, oh, hold on everybody and she had to go, let her dogs out, it's like, this is a zoning board meeting, like, what are we doing? Just because we're at home, doesn't mean you shouldn't have locked your dogs outside or put them somewhere quiet and found a quiet place. People need to be professional and there's no professionalism at all, it's gone.
Yeah, well, I mean, on that one, it's another area where I'm willing to give people some slack because it is a, I mean, for all I know, you can probably hear sneezing and laughing in the background here because it's tough to find space to do, places to do this. But it all goes one way, I mean, there's, you know, over the last couple of years, every now and then you'll get one of these controversies, well, not a couple of years, over the past six months since there have been COVID meetings, you get these controversies, oh, this person was, was not wearing a shirt and had the camera up here and this person touched a toe And this person uh, touched her toe and this person seems to have gone to get a drink of alcohol, but it all goes one way. It's all just chatter and rumor mill stuff. It's, it's really, I, I, I'm kind of surprised zoning board meetings weren't just videotaped. As a matter of course, as you say, they're legal proceedings. These things end up in, in multimillion dollar lawsuits. Having a video record is kind of a no-brainer because it's at this point, it's so cheap to do.
Well, here's, here's a point that I've, I've been wanting to make and this, I think this is a great opportunity to do so. Before, when we were in, you know, a physical space, the meetings weren't recorded. There was a stenographer, there was a stenographer. But then the meeting minutes are the only thing that's published. There's no raw record of the entire meeting that's published that I could get ahold of. And those meeting minutes are filtered through Lisi and the zoning board. So they don't reflect how she makes rude comments to this particular, again, my first zoning board meeting, there was this lawyer there. And I didn't even understand the terms that she, like the, the saying that she was saying, but she was talking down to the guy and you can tell he was kind of putting his head down and and you know, he was, oh, just, you know, everybody's always apologetic because they're, they're trying to get relief. So they don't want to, they don't want to piss off the, you know, the, the judge and the jury back there. But it's just, it's not professional. But what you, it's, it's almost an abuse of power. I mean, you know, so they apologize, oh, yes, oh, yes. And they smile and they laugh and they try to go along with it. But she can tell they're uncomfortable and all of that is totally sanitized by the time the meeting minutes come out because there's no, there's no actual record. So I mean, maybe that's one of the benefits of, of being on the Zoom meetings is that I encourage everybody, go watch these meetings. Pay particular attention to how she talks to people and how George talks to people because people will come. I mean, these are your fellow townspeople. They, we're not lawyers. And one, if you don't have a lawyer, oh, they, you, oh, you're gonna represent yourself? How dare you? But then if, if somebody like, even if there's a lawyer, you're like, oh, they, they submit another paper because they, they, they found something else. They, they found more evidence. Oh, why wasn't in the package? George goes off on, on these applicants because he spent all this time preparing and, and now he's gotta consider some new evidence and he, he gets really irritated by it. I, I. Not, not for the applicants, just because I like to see George get angry.
But I think town meetings have a lot of, and it just, you know, I, I'm in the middle of an afro battle to get executive session meetings out of the town council. But you read a lot of these meetings, executive session or otherwise, and I, sometimes you wonder if the, you know, the person writing the notes, it'll be, you'll know there was a discussion that three people were having and one of them, let's just say Denise DiMaderos will be one of them and won't be mentioned in the, the meeting, in the minutes. Just, it just seems kind of strange and video, video is just, and audio, you know, I guess would be easier on a running basis, but having some sort of record that people can actually get and access and see what was going on, it just seems so obvious. I'm curious though. And maybe you know, maybe you don't. So if you don't know, that's fine. Um, who, on these Zoom meetings, who controls? Like I know you can mute participants. Who has access to that? Is that the chair? Is that the solicitor? He's the, he's the parliamentarian. So.
No, no, it's, it's those, those guys that do the, the um, the recordings for the town. They run the Zoom meetings. Well, they do a good job.
Right. But so if, so let's say the solicitor says, Mr. Bishop, you have the floor, you're talking and somebody else decides they're gonna talk over you. Who would actually have the power to hit mute? That would be the video guys?
Yeah, and they don't.
Well, not, that's understandable, but the, the chair would have to say, hey, what's his name? Alex? Alex, I think.
Yeah, something like that. I don't.
Oh, I need you to please mute him. I mean, that would be.
Yeah, and nobody could hear you anyway because you know, you're all talking over each other. Most of what they do is they control, um, allowing the applicants to, to come on and speak. They unmute them, allow, let them come into the conversation, then they, and then they basically turn them off afterwards.
But it's not a, it's not a meeting control thing. It's more just trying to deal with it. Well, Joel, thanks for coming on. I'm sure, I'm sure this will be a, a topic of conversation in the future. And hopefully, you know, the, the invitation is out to those who mentioned in this and those who have an interest to reach out to me and, and happy to have them on and debate or just converse.
I'll have a debate right, right here with George or Lisi if they want to come on. I mean, I'm happy to talk civilly about their behavior and how I don't appreciate it. And they, you know, they say, oh, well, why didn't you come to us? Well, because it's a hostile environment. And of course, what, what good is it gonna be for me to come to you? It seems like the only way that we can do this is to get the entire town to understand and get people involved. And, and that's what I want to do. I want to get more people involved. If, if they can't volunteer, that's fine, but watch the meetings and write letters to the town council if nothing else and just, just be heard and just, if they know you're paying attention, I think they'll change the behavior.
No, I, I think that probably the better behavior in the last few meetings is, is evidence of that. Well, Joel, thanks for coming on and uh, I'll be talking to you soon.
All right. Thank you.
And that'll do it for this episode of Tivered and On Track. Uh, I want to thank Joel Bishop for joining me and I do want to again, extend to, and the invitation, it's open to anybody who wants to respond or on any other issue, you know, even if you're not in the middle of a controversy, if you've got an event or something, some news to share or something you want to talk about, give me a call or an email or contact me somehow. Looking for people who want to make this a kind of a community forum and we're definitely open for that. We don't always have to be political. I hope we're not always political because it's not always as fun as, as talking about other things that people are doing. Uh, so in the meantime, you can find all these episodes on tivedinfactcheck.org as well as various podcast services and audio and in video, iTunes, Stitcher, Spotify, uh, YouTube, Facebook, obviously. And many other services. And there again, if there's a service you use that you want us to uh, make these available in, please let us know and we'll be happy to do that. And so in the meantime, have a wonderful week and if I don't manage to get another one of these done before Thanksgiving, enjoy your Thanksgiving meal, I guess, according to the governor with your family in your house, unless you want to, you know, rebel and have a couple additional relatives in the house. That might be, who, who knows what could happen then. Well, have a great night.